To order at 6:00 PM in the Stanley T. Williams Community Center on February 8. We'll call Chairman Sarah Perkel, Vice Chair Shawna Papaholzer.
Here.
Secretary Elizabeth Siena.
Here.
Janet Boswell.
Here.
Carolyn Candelora.
Here.
Marcia Nofrio.
Here.
Vincent Mace. We all please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Education will discuss and possibly take action on the following adjudicated items before we move on to the budget workshop.
So, I mean, I don't have a lot of new things, although I do have some answers to the questions that were raised last time. I did check on the electric, and both of the usages are up a little over 6%, so that was fairly level. However, the Wallingford electric, I actually took a slight decrease, about 2% decrease in cost. UI was up over 16%.
Sixteen?
So you were correct. That's the split between them. There was also a question about who was counted in the head count in central office. It did not, it was six people, Scott, myself, Tracy, Suzanne, Karen, and Bill. Does not count Anne Marie or Mike Lawler because they are paid out of other funds.
Okay.
In terms of the cost of substitutes, if we were to raise the rate across the board by $10 a day, we would have to budget about an additional $20,000.
Oh, wow.
And this is capital, so I don't know if you want to hold this for later, because I also have an, well, I don't have an answer. I have some information about the bathrooms.
Yeah, we'll move to get to capital.
Okay.
So, we didn't receive questions from our last workshop, so at any time if you have additional questions that you didn't forward to us, obviously, this would be the opportunity and the time the administrators are here. If you have any specific questions for them, feel free.
Just because there's so many new board members, at the February meeting, next week at the February meeting is where we'll have to make a decision as to what dollar amount we want to submit to the town for our budget. So, we have to make a decision by next Thursday, so if there are any questions or concerns or anything, they really do need to be sent in. So, you're prepared to go next week?
I actually do have a little bit of a ridiculous question. So, when we're coming up with a dollar amount, do we meet in executive session and we'll be here, and then how do we come up with a dollar amount? Do we take it from lines or just an overall dollar amount?
Pretty much an overall dollar. Do you want to explain it?
Well, you can do either. I mean, for example, one of the things Scott mentioned at the last meeting was to eliminate, and I can get the exact number, it's about $19,000 for coaches, athletic coaches. So, you know, you could make that a specific reduction. I have seen in the past where, you know, Orin would say, "Okay, you know, come back with $200,000 less." So, it's, you know, really-
And if the boards had come up with $200,000 less, do you resubmit a budget with that deduction?
Well, we would tell you at the next meeting what, you know, what the suggested reductions were.
We would meet as a team.
Okay.
And we would go through line items and things that we would need to eliminate to get to that number.
Okay. Did we not take the $19,000 out?
Well, we didn't, and there was no motion to remove it.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's something you could do tonight or you could do next week.
Okay.
It's 19-5-52. 19-5-52.
Donna, I have some questions. I'm just trying to know if the special education regular OT, it went up like $100,000. Is that like a new student opinion, like even services or why did it so much?
I'm sorry, Beth, could you repeat which line you're looking at?
Page 29. 1,200 special education, regular OT. It went up $100,000, I just-
It went up 50. From the 17th-
Oh, 50 from last year.
It went up 50. That's certified staff. So, that's basically, you know, what I do is I take the existing staff and I simply move it forward in accordance with the new teachers contract. And so, you will see variations in this because depending on where people are, for example, in this, going from this year to 1819, there's no additional money at the top step. So, if you happen to, if you had a department that had all people at the top step, you actually wouldn't have any increase. But there is step movement for the rest of the group, so typically, people are going to get a $3,000 or $4,000 raise next year.
Okay. On page 37, it has retiree benefits under like a thousand, regular instruction. I think I want a clarification for page 57.
I'm sorry, on page 57 or 37?
No, 57.
Because the retiree benefits on 37 would be sevens.
No.
And that represents three or four people.
Okay. On 56, let's go there, 56. We have like the telephone listed for STW Jerome, TVES, MBIS, the high school personnel central office, and then it says district. Well, can you clarify, because I would think that all the above are district.
They are.
Why does district have a separate one?
It's, I mean, it's simply the way we've allocated it over the, in past years, that the, and particularly now because of the way we have the voice-over IP service, when we're billed by Frontier, 60% of the bill goes against 4A41440, which is, so I mean, I consider that a district expense, and that's why it's put there, whereas the other buildings, so I actually have a spreadsheet where, you know, breaks it down by, you know, how many lines are in which building, what their costs are, and those kinds of things. I mean, you could almost call the whole thing a district expense.
Yeah, that's right.
And, you know, we just always allocated some to the buildings.
We've carried a zero for payphones over the last four years.
Yes.
Well, there's a little method to my madness, Sarah.
Why do you think they're coming back?
No, no. Because I've had this spreadsheet back for many, many years, so what happens is when I go to copy stuff back into like a historical one, it's easier if it has the same lines on lines, so I just leave them there.
Are there any other questions?
So, as we mentioned at the last meeting with the PowerPoint, the status quo budget to remain with current staffing levels with the building increases anywhere, personnel is at 3.85%. The superintendent's budget included the items that were listed on the third page of your page two. For the positions that need to be static, 4.48. So, as you work through this and look at things, the question becomes the number that you want to present for us to carry forward to the town council. Knowing the economic climate, knowing the political climate, knowing all of those factors, and your charge of moving the district forward, all of those things weigh into what you as a board feel is fiscally sound and the best interest of the district.
Who presents the budget to the town council?
It's varied over the years. There's been years that I have worked with Don, together, we've had the board chair do it in the past, board members. We're very flexible and comfortable with whatever scenario the board feels they'd like to present it.
And what is the likelihood that the town council will pass what is presented? Or do they typically negotiate or say, "We're cutting 2%"? Like, how does that work? Or is there a trend or?
I can just speak, for my nine years, I've never received the superintendent's budget request. It's always, it always has been reduced down to, I mean, if we looked historically, Don's been here 23 years, you'd have to go back, I don't want you to turn the spot here, Don, but-
Typically, what percent do, or do you know that, do they typically tend to limit that?
You really don't, and part of it has to do with, you know, the council gets our requests, and they get all the other requests, and they have to factor into debt service and, you know, tax collection rates and all those kinds of things. And so, ultimately, what they end up doing is they look at the impact on the taxpayer. And so, that impact will vary. You know, this year, we're, at least this is the most recent rendition I saw, was that our ECS is going to go down about $200,000 from next year from what it was this year, but this year, it was down a million over what it was in the past. So, you know, there's, and frankly, that's a mil.
A mil, just 300,000?
No, a mil is, percent for us-
Oh, percent, what percent?
A mil is probably about 1.3 or something like that, and I may be incorrect on that because that's really a town-side calculation. But, so, you know, there, if they were to do nothing other than fill the hole left by the state, taxes are going to go up by one mil.
My other question is, as we're like figuring out what to do with the budget, do you typically go in with the exact number you want, or do you go in higher hoping that you're going to land in a number that's palatable?
We come in with the exact number. I mean, you look at, Don has-
No, no, I mean, we're going to be, I'm sure we're going to be negotiating and thinking about where we are going to need to cut the budget. And when you do that, do we go in saying, "All right, well, we want, you know, $30 million", knowing that's the exact number we want, or do you inflate it a little like most people do when they do their budget? And yes, I'm on tape saying this, but I'm just curious how it works. Like, do you go in a little bit high in hopes that you're going to land at the number that's like-
But do you go with your dream number and then realistically know eventually-
And because realistically, this budget's not going to be passed as it, so there's going to need to be some massage into it, but how much?
Well, you figure, you know, when you do your home budget, the $31 million budget, and for every percentage point equating to this much, if you have a catastrophic year with outplacements, people coming into the district where special ed services, the costs can be absorbed, we talked about the past week, where, you know, we had three students come in that are quite expensive, that you didn't plan for. If the weather, we had two weeks of sub, you know, 20-degree temperatures, and our fuel costs that can spike, so there's the unknown, so you always have to, like when you're doing your home budget, we have to prepare for the what-ifs.
Yep.
So, you know, we try to be as responsible as possible, and then as we get towards the end of the year, as you recall, we have the ability to line shift monies over for expenses, and we've always given money back, and by nine years, we've always, Don has done a wonderful job at working with the administrators and building budgets that are responsible. If you look at our per pupil expenditure and where we sit in the state, we're in that bottom tier, for us to be able to run our district and provide the services that we do is commendable. And there's always going to be that, you don't want to go back to the town and say, "We need $300,000."
And so, if you have extra money in the budget, it goes back to the town?
It goes back to the town.
And you start freshing it the next time?
We don't carry anyone who's over. It goes back to the town.
Correct. And the other thing is, I mentioned when we last met, I'm hoping that healthcare is going to come down some, but so far, it hasn't.
So, that's a risk, you know, with something we don't control and-
And if you look on page 19, and I realize it's a bit of an eye test, but it would tell you, for example, if you look at the lower section for new requests, it would tell you if you eliminated a specific item, what the impact on the budget request would be.
Right.
So, if we eliminated, down in the second table under new, I won't even say the name, but if we eliminated that item, it would eliminate 0.2% from our request. And so, that's how, you know, that's how I get to these numbers, and that's how you know what a reduction will do.
And as we mentioned before, for every $300,000 equates to approximately, you know, one percentage point. So, if we were to get zero and move forward with a zero, we're looking at, you know, over a million dollars that we would have to go into this budget and cut and find things to remove, which would be personnel. There's nothing, we're beyond anything other than personnel.
Don, do you remember the number we got last year?
I think it was about 1%. It might have been a tad higher than that. I think it was actually intended to be one, but through some, the magic of math, I think it ended up being slightly different, but not much.
Scott, I was just wondering on this if it talks about the cost of like automotive at the high school, the greenhouse and all that? Is there any way of getting numbers for electives at the high school?
The cost of it?
Yeah.
Well, the greenhouse is not a class, so it's supervised by a paraprofessional who oversees it, so there's really, there's not a teacher for the-
So, what about like for automotive and what like that would cost with?
Automotive, we're running two sections right now?
Two or three sections per semester. It's taught with the individual who's also certified in project lead away, so the person who teaches the automotive is also teaching project lead away, two to three sections per year as well.
And then, do you also know, because are we also paying for like oil, and because I know they do oil change, and I'm assuming we have hazmat having to come in, like do we have an overall cost of what in automotive?
By state statute, the lift has to be inspected per year, and there's a cost associated with that. But any work that the kids do, or the kids do work on the staff's vehicles, the folks who own the vehicles pay for everything, including oil, including any parts that they may need for a brake job or for an exhaust job or something like that.
Okay.
The tech a teacher does order just to have on stock, maybe a case of oil per year, but that's, we don't supply parts and oil and lubricants.
It's pretty much self-sufficient. I mean, it sustains itself. It is the most popular electric that we have.
So, it sounds like half a year's salary.
Automotive or audiovisual class are the two highest signups for our students, so we've gotten an incredible bang for our buck for what was a small investment. It was a storage area for the block.
Right.
And we put, we were able to put three lifts in. We have advanced automotive and introductory automotive, and we generally have greater than 100 signups per year with ice.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just thinking if we're wanting, I just wasn't sure because we're wanting, you know, what you're asking for in the budget. I was just wondering if it would be worth, but if it's a wash, then it's a wash.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, the cost of-
Some thinking academics, I mean, if we could throw in another eight or something as opposed to automotive, I mean, I would be for that, but if it's a wash, then it's a wash.
Well, I, the fact that 100 kids sign up for that and-
I also know people that thought it was a bigger thing, and they stayed in North Branford. I know two kids that stayed in North Branford thinking it was more advanced, and then they couldn't get into vinyl tech. They didn't realize how basic it was, so I understand what you're saying, but people that want to go into this, you know, they felt like it's an introduction, so just wanted to throw it.
Yeah, we'd love to do more, but then I'd do more personnel, and so it's that double edge.
Right.
If we could do four-
Well, we're not a trade school.
No, right, and that's, we can't compete with line.
Right.
That's the reality.
And I mean, for many of our electives, the largest cost is the staff member that's running it.
All right, that's good to know. Thank you.
Do you want to discuss the number tonight or wait until next week? We'll wait, we'll wait.
Okay, so again, if anything comes up, you know, please let me know. I just want to, before we do, Mr. Mace wasn't able to be here. If there's any questions or anything in the handout, I think you do have copies of it. I can make copies of the PowerPoint that we had at the last meeting. Feel free to call or come in or email anything for us so that you, you know, you're up to speed with everyone else that was at that meeting. It's, you know, it's pretty self-explanatory if you go through it, but if there's anything that you don't understand or have a question, just call us.
I believe, I'm pretty sure I gave you the PowerPoint when you were here last week for the other meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe mixing with your policy stuff.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, do you want to move on to capital?
Yes.
I don't have a lot of information about the capital. What I did is, I went to our last, because we did do a bid for the high school bathrooms, and for 11 bathrooms, the total was $430,000. Unfortunately, we didn't bid it by room, we bid it as a total project. So, I did two things. I looked at the square footage of all the bathrooms and came up with an estimate per bathroom based on square footage, and I also took a fixture count and did an estimate based on square footage for that. So, I mean, if I look at, because there was some talk about doing the two rooms near room 15, doing those two different ways comes out to about between $28,000 and $31,000 for each for those rooms, so the total would be about 60 to do those two bathrooms.
Now, these are outdated prices and-
Yeah, that's true too.
So, you'd have to add?
These were May of '15, so there's a couple of years of inflation. I don't know what the construction inflation has been.
But these, that was to make it accessible when they were going to redo all the bathrooms, they're including that in the cost. Now, from what I understand, if I'm correct, if we end up doing the bathrooms like we did the roof, if we ever decide to reconstruct or go into the whole school, we lose grant money on that, so we're not going to get reimbursed if we ever decide to go and redo the high school. We will not get money for our roof. Am I correct on that?
You won't get money for the roof, that's correct.
And then if we do the bathrooms, we won't be able to-
If you take, if we take state money for the bathrooms, then they would be ineligible. If we don't, and frankly, I'm not sure how much we would get, so, you know, there's a little bit of a balancing act there. Do you try to get some matching funds for the bathrooms, and then knowing that then when you do do a reconstruction, they're not going to pay you for those again? Or do we say, you know, let's do the bathrooms without applying for any state grant, and that way, when the reconstruction is done, they would be eligible?
I think we, I mean, personally, I think we should just hold off on doing the bathrooms and not get reconstructing the whole building so we don't end up losing any money.
You have to break it down to, if you were to do two bathrooms at, Don, was it number 28,000 per bathroom, 30,000?
Yeah, around 30.
So, for $60,000, you're not going to be into a new high school in the next five years.
Well, and I get that, but I think-
So, on your reimbursement rate of 58% or whatever North Branford would get, you're really out if you get the reimbursement, you know, about 30,000. You have to go in and see those bathrooms. They're an embarrassment.
I absolutely-
It's an absolute embarrassment for-
I understand, but I think the whole school needs to be revamped, and I think we should be looking, stepping forward to that.
Well, we want to do that, there's no question, but the reality-
And I just don't want to do anything that we're going to do that could lose us money for raising the school now.
Well, no, you're not, you're not going to lose it.
Could lose money, serve the bathrooms.
I have a question. I've heard a lot about renovating the school and that it needs to be done, but how do you initiate that project? I've never heard once how we begin initiating that project, so the longer we don't initiate, the longer it kicks out.
The longer it kicks out.
The longer it kicks out. So, if we're renovating the bathrooms now and we don't kick out this project for 12 years, then we have a problem, but if we start initiating it now, we-
So, you're not going to get, you're not going to get reimbursed on the roof. You're already, you're-
Right, we already lost out, but that's what I'm saying. If other things go wrong and we need to do state money on that, why don't we start the ball rolling now on renovation? But the problem is, we have to have first-
But a bathroom, you're only talking $60,000 for the life of 10 years.
But we didn't anticipate, but we didn't anticipate the roof needing to be done. We, I'm just thinking, it's an old building, we got to look into things that could happen and anticipating it, and would it make more sense to hold off on the bathrooms, start a project, because you guys will be focused on, or we will be focused on, doing the bathrooms instead of looking at the full school? And I don't think that makes sense.
But two nice bathrooms for $60,000, if you're not in your building, it's costing you $10,000 a year over the life of six years. If you get into a building that's six years-
And if we use our town money, we are still eligible for reimbursement when we do.
So, if we decide to do the bathrooms to appease everybody, then how long is it going to take to let-
It's not to appease everybody.
It's not to appease, I'm just saying, how long is it going to take-
It's to have a nice place for the students to have a clean bathroom.
Excuse me, how long is it going to take to start talking about renovating the school?
We've been talking about it for years.
Well, so why don't we put in an action? That's my point. Let's start putting it into action.
The council had a presentation. Marie Diamond presented with Dan Arman. They had a great deal of information that was contributed to by the board. They went before the council and it went nowhere. So, to get the project started, we can start with it. We'd have to designate monies to do site plans and have a group come in and start to get a feel for what we're looking to do with that building. We'd probably cost down $50,000 to $75,000, I'm estimating, to do.
I just want to ask a question.
So, you'd have to earmark that money, but knowing that the state of the state right now and the way monies are being dispensed in Connecticut for school projects, this could be, who knows how long.
But when Vinny talked to you, didn't he say that now would be the time to start looking into this as our state route?
Nine years, we've been doing research into this for nine years. Two bathrooms for the students is something that would be a worthwhile investment. You're not going to do those bathrooms and look back and say, "My gosh, we made two nice bathrooms for the kids to use."
When Marie-
And you're not going to lose over six years of getting into the bathrooms.
When Marie and Dan presented to the board, did they have site plans and all of that?
Well, it wouldn't be site plans, it would, they had a-
What did they present?
It was just a, an overview and the process of what they would like to do based upon square footage, based upon the age of the building, based upon, you know, money put into the roof and what it would look like.
About a year and a half, maybe a year or so, maybe a little over a year. I was part of that committee. I was part of-
Can we get our hands on that?
I probably haven't.
Yeah.
And I was part of the long-range committee. The problem is that it's going to be upwards of $40,000 or $50,000, and we are, last we knew, about 53% reimbursement was our rate. The town still has to come up with upwards of $20,000, $25,000 million, and they wanted to have no discussion about it that's not in the budget.
Correct, that we don't owe anything right now, correct?
No, town owes no-
This is the, no, but I mean, like as far as the schools and everything and-
The debt service?
The, yeah, well, just whatever they're doing, like we're okay.
I think the MBIS project is still in the debt service number, I believe.
Yes.
But that's probably the only one.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if we're not in a whole lot of debt, or if any, then why not start now?
Well, I don't know if the libraries are paid off. I know the police station is out there that they want to potentially do, so, you know, there's others-
So, how is there a way of finding out?
I mean, is it possible, is it possible that we create a subcommittee, we take the presentation that was already given to the town council, look at it, see where we're all standing on it, and maybe re-present to them, because if they don't back us, it's a moot point, right?
That's, that's what I'm saying.
So, why don't we at least go and try to do that?
With all due- With all due respect, we have been trying, for 13 years that I've been on the board, we've been talking about doing this high school over, doing this high school over for 13 years. We have gotten, and I'm not blaming fault on the town council. It's a lot of economic issues that are holding them back from committing to this. Our bond rating, hasn't that decreased, Don?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
I thought I heard one of the meetings-
I know we were beginning to get close to the, where they were concerned about her.
Because you can only, when you borrow so much and then you try to borrow more, your rating-
And then your interest rate goes up, so.
Right. And they were not interested in doing this, that they were not-
Well, maybe now they will be.
I mean, a year ago, they weren't, you know, a little over a year. I can look for that presentation.
Yeah, that way if we presented as a team, as a board, a new board, and then they say no, well, then the bathrooms may make more sense because we know.
The kids deserve a decent bathroom.
Well, the kids deserve a decent school. I mean, bathroom, I mean, they're not going to spend all their learning time in the bathroom. I walked into East Haven High School the other day and I was like, wow, it's just, and Guilford just redid their, wow. And I know we're not Guilford and I know we're not East Haven, but those are our neighboring schools. And to walk into their schools and look at it going, wow, I think our kids deserve better than just a bathroom. My kids don't even use the bathroom in the high school.
You should go to the next town council meeting and give that speech.
But this is not, this is not a new problem. That high school was built in 60-
Well, that's what I'm saying. So we're trying to fix it with just the bathroom to appease these kids.
We're not saying we fix it with the bathroom. We all agree here needs to be a new high school. We're saying the kids have to wait 10 years. In the meantime, they deserve a new bathroom.
But let's, but let's get the ball rolling.
There are kids currently in that building that have no place to go to the bathroom besides, this is a disgusting bathroom.
Right. But let's get the ball rolling to-
No one's disagreeing with you.
Not just appease with the bathroom. Let's look at the, let's first, let's present to the town council.
What we're looking at is capital items that are on a list. So these capital items, you have to say and decide, these are priority ones that we want to chip away. We, we put a boiler in at the high school. So you've already made an investment in the heating system of your high school. You're not going to get reimbursement on it. You put a million dollar plus roof on the flat section, another 200,000 or 300,000 on the small gym. You, you've already started to Band-Aid a footprint that you're not going to move out of. You're not going to build a new high school somewhere. So if history is any indication of what we can expect in North Branford for the building projects that we've done here, Don, when was the Fussen or, uh, study done with all the renovations?
Moser Pylon?
Yeah.
2002, I think it was.
So in '02, the projection for all of the buildings, everything was supposed to be done when in? 11?
Something like that.
Something like 2011. Every single building in this district was supposed to be refurbished, including a new central office and every other building done, a new high school. The only thing that's been done since that study was MBIS. That's it. And that was a renovate is new. So this, this predates Scott Schoolmaker. This was done way back with Bob Wolf early on. And nothing has, and I can pull that and give you that document. They spent how many thousands of dollars on that document? I can give you the same document to look at. The pricing is going to be outdated, but the conversation has been, has been going on for-
Oh, I think we need to have another conversation with them.
My recommendation for short dollars, when you've put a million dollars into a roof, you've put a new boiler system into that high school, so you have heat, for $60,000 for whatever it is, to have an area where kids in the community can go into and not be like, I don't want to use this facility. And my recommendation is we're going to do this and we have money at MBIS left over from the roofing project that technically we could get back in use because we haven't spent a lot of that money. We should do four bathrooms. We should do the two community bathrooms near the gymnasium, which are, you know, three or four stall bathrooms for the women and the men, because we get a lot of activity there for community events. And then the two on that first floor near room 15. So if you want to do it right, I think you're looking at probably closer to $100,000 total. And then you have an area done that at least when people come in and the community comes in, you're going to be proud of it. And the students will say, oh, you know what? We're making baby steps. We're doing something.
Well, if, yeah, just to be clear though, if you're looking at two gang labs there in the neighborhood, depending on how you do the calculation, of 40, 40 to $50,000 apiece. That was, they were more different when I did it by square footage versus fixtures. The smaller ones pretty much came out to the same number. One thing just to mention, if you look on page 91, which is the capital, that was the capital that was put in this book. It's almost the very last page. One of the things we did put in there, and it was one of the things that had been brought up at the Budget Subcommittee when the board talked about their priorities, was $25,000 for a construction estimate for renovated as new. Now, I mean, that might not be enough money, but at least there was some recognition that it was in, was necessary. The other thing just to mention on capital is what's different about it from operating? You had asked earlier, if, if the town council makes a cut, what happens? If the town council makes a cut in the operating budget, they cut some number of dollars. It then comes back to the board to decide how to manage that cut. Capital, they have line item veto. So whatever we put in for capital, you know, they can decide, well, we're going to do this, but we're not going to do this or- So that's, it is different than the operating budget.
So just another kind of off question. So if you were going to start a renovation of school, would it be in this budget now or do you have to present it to town council prior to hitting the capital budget?
Because the capital budget is approved by the town council, so at some point, they have to come along.
But I mean, do you give them a heads up like, hey, we would really like to do this, expect it in the capital budget this year? Or is it, hey, it's in the capital budget this year, what do you think? Like which way, which way do you go? I mean, what, what do they prefer since they are the dollars, right? And we want to get, we want to get the dollars? So like, what do they like? To not get a no, to not getting-
We haven't figured out how to not get a no.
There we go.
I mean, you know, for years, they kept saying a few more years, the debt service is on the decline, the debt service is on the decline.
Well, that's what I was told this year, that it's on the decline.
Well, but what, again, what happened is the debt service did decline, as did the state revenue. And so I think, I think, and you can't absolutely quote me on this, but I believe what happened is that reduction in debt service was one of the things that helped us survive the reduction from the state so that, you know, there was a balance there. But what that did is then that additional money from the debt service wasn't available for other things.
Right. That's what I've heard them say.
So ECS money, the cost sharing money that we get, we get about $8 million from Connecticut in our $31 million budget. So if we're, if, if the state gave us $1 million less, that has to be absorbed somewhere from the town. If we look forward to next year and it's going to be $200,000 or more than that number, that's almost a full percentage point for us that the taxpayer is going to have to absorb if we're, if we're continuing to take it away from the rainy day fund that the town has.
I thought we anticipated, like we thought the state was going to cut us at a much higher level this year. So we anticipated that and we raised our taxes, and I think it was like, what, $500 a household, to, to-
To absorb.
Absorb that. Then the state didn't cut us to the extent that we have. No, but we had more, we're in the black. That's why I understand. I think what happened was they were expecting a certain cut. But then there was talk from, from people that we're not going to get hit as badly as they thought, as they originally said. So the council, if I'm not mistaken, came up with a number that they were comfortable increasing the taxpayer. And if you remember, with our tax bills, we got notices saying there may be a supplemental tax bill. Exactly. And when they didn't, when they didn't cut us as badly as they originally said, we didn't have the need for the supplemental tax bill. But I do, I was attending the meetings for a while. I don't pretend to. I don't know. I'm, I'm pretty sure though that they anticipated it and it was, because there was talk about in the council, last council meeting that they might give, you know, some of the tax money back, which they're not going to do. But I could swear that was what the whole, it was in the newspaper. Well, I thought they took some out of, out of like the rainy day fund to help offset it. And I think when we, I don't know. I don't know about the rainy day fund. But I can swear that they said in the newspaper, we were in the black. That's why I'm confused, like why it's going to be such a bad budget year because I thought we were actually doing okay, considering that we thought the state was going to cut us drastically and they didn't.
Well, one of the things that I, and again, I'm on somewhat thin ice here. I think one of the things the council decided not to do was to anticipate the town having to pick up a third of the teachers' retirement contributions. And as it turns out, that, that did not happen. So that, you know, that might be part of it. There was, they, they did anticipate some shortfall. And as I said, I think they used some of the debt service to offset that. They elected not to do anything with the teachers' retirement contribution and that ended up not coming to fruition. So, you know, this is one of these things that there were so many cuts being talked about at one point in time. It's almost hard to keep track of it.
Right.
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 Are there any other questions about the capital budget? Do you want to talk again about capital budget next meeting?
Well, I think if, if you want to look at that capital budget prioritized, and if there's things that you think that are on there that are more important, there's things like unit ventilators. You know, they're $10,000 per unit. One burst at Jerome Harrison the other day, as you recall. We've been out of that classroom for two weeks. So it's not if it's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen. And we've done a nice job at the high school of continuously, over the summer months, being able to change a few of them out to keep, you know, on, on top of that. Because the pipes burst, they're old, they're outdated, we have to replace them. So it's really looking at that list. And if we were to pick a few things, what would you want to do? What would we want to do? And it's helpful because the administrators, they live in those buildings, they work in those buildings, they, they, they know those buildings. And it's helpful, obviously, to gain their input on what we feel, if we had to pick one or we had to pick two, what would it be?
I won't be here for the meeting next Thursday. But in the past, we have kind of prioritized what we thought were the most important on here. But correct me if I'm wrong, Don, haven't we submitted our whole capital list a number of times because they have line item veto? You know what I mean? And it's, I hate to, just for argument's sake, say, let's just do the first three things, okay? And they shoot them down. And they said, well, you should have left the waterproofing, the brick on there because we think that's important. You know what I mean? So it'll be up to you guys to decide that, but you may want to prioritize what you think are the most important.
Because when you meet with them and the question is asked, okay, well, you're not getting all of that. The water brick treatment has been on there for years. I mean, the, the life of the auditorium was supposed to be done within 10 years, Don, was the lifespan of the waterproofing. It's never been done. So it's, you know, you kick the can down the road, eventually you're going to have problems with water. But again, we've prioritized on things that we've had to do. We had to have heat in your high school. We had to do the boiler. You know, leaking roof at the middle school, we had to put money into that building. So it, it's helpful at the next meeting, if, maybe if we pick a few that we're really high on. And if the council asks us, well, listen, we're going to give you one thing, you're going to get $100,000. What are you going to do with it? We know.
They have, they have done that in the past, yeah. Because I, I personally hate to like pick and choose, especially if it was something that they were going to give us.
Waterproofing the auditorium would not be a high priority.
No, no, I was just, for argument's sake, I'm just saying, you know, for-
But, you know, there's things on here that we have to do. They're going to go and, I mean, things are going to-
It's normal.
Right.
Well, I mean, also, sometimes when, for example, the one that failed at Jerome Harrison because of the ice cold weather calls, you know, we have to replace that out of the repair account because we can't just not do it. You know, the, the, the purpose of putting some of this into the capital budget is to be a little more planful. Obviously, when things fail, then we have no choice and it becomes a repair instead of an approval.
Will you move on to public comment?
Before you adjourn, before you adjourn, since this isn't listed as a special meeting, next month's meeting, March, I am not sure I'm going to be able to attend. I just want to let you know that. And I know Vince had let me know that he will not be in attendance at the next meeting.
Possibly not, no.
My mother's in Dubai for the next meeting, so I could do the-
Do you want to bump it out?
You got three possi, you got three pretty good no's and then you could have a quorum issue.
I'm sorry, when is this?
March 15.
March 15?
So if we bumped out to the next Thursday, it would be the 22nd. The last Thursday would then be the 29th. So the 22nd and 29th would be available, possible dates to move that meeting out to?
I'm good for both days.
I am too.
I'm, yeah, I'm guessing the April meeting is early because of the break.
So maybe the 22nd would be a better day.
Because otherwise you might have meetings two weeks apart.
Does the 22nd work for everyone?
I'm, I'm good with that. I just wanted to bring it up tonight because if we post, if we cancel and repost now, we're outside the 30-day window, so it won't be a special meeting.
Caroline, is that where you're talking?
22nd, March 22nd. 15.
That's okay?
Good. Jan, does that work for you?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
First, second. I'm, I'm on either Carolina or they both kind of said the same thing. Whoever you want.
Call in favor?
Hi.
Hi.